Hey, good evening. Excuse me, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Tustin Planning Board. We're gonna open up a public hearing, which is a continuation of last month's meeting on a subdivision that is section block and lot three point three dash one dash two. It's a parcel, it's owned by Kenneth Bain on Gables Road. It is a, it's, it's basically dividing one piece of property into two, and it, it's fair to mention that it has a natural division because, a natural barrier because it, it, Gables Road rights right in between the two parcels. And I'm gonna open that up for public comments, anybody have any public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Speak now. I'm on this.
First meeting.
Okay. He, well, we don't even have a podium, so I'll just say where you are, you just state your name, please.
My name is Barbara Holtz.
Okay.
And I own a property on Perry Pond.
Okay.
That, a box, believe a box.
Okay.
The Gables on that side.
Right.
So I was wondering, like, do we know the plans? The property, now, these are things I might have missed, I understand.
Yeah, and what I can tell you, what I, yeah, what I can tell you is not substantiated, but originally there was a plan to build a home on that parcel, but I believe that plan is not happening because apparently the person who's gonna be purchasing this property is also purchasing another piece of property on next door to that, so this is gonna, more than likely, but again, don't quote me, is gonna, is gonna remain built in its present state.
And they're going to build their house on the one.
Correct, that's, that's what I've heard so far, but that's, again. Okay, all right, you're welcome.
Again, all we can consider here is the actual subdivision of the property. Someone would have to pull a building permit to actually go forward at some point in time. That, and that at this point, as far as we know, has not happened.
Okay, um, any, anybody on Zoom with comments?
Yes, anybody up there, anybody out there in the radio land?
Adrian, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I think it's, we can accept, I can accept the motion to close the public hearing.
It's been until seven thirty.
Okay, it's seven thirty, you're right, okay, good enough.
It might be a late arrival for all we know.
It's very good question. Is the future of a property that wants to be subdivided? I mean, is the future use of it relevant, whether or not it can be subdivided? I mean, does a person have to say what they're gonna do?
I don't believe so.
No.
No. Because at that point, like, if they wanted to do something, they'd have to either go in front of the building department and, and, or, you know, again, they might end up back in front of the planning board, depending on what they wanted to do with it, so.
But after it was something.
Correct, you know.
They can always change their minds, but whatever somebody's concept is today might be different tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, it's just like, never mind.
Wanted them to be made into one, which you guys thanked you all, you did, but we didn't have to say what we were gonna do.
And that's just a separate project. When you go to get a building permit or whatever, then you declare and submit plans for what you're.
I'm just curious, I never read about that issue.
Yeah, our scope here is narrow, it's really.
One, one, yeah.
Special use permits, subdivision, lot line adjustments. We don't know what you're getting, big picture. Whatever that is. Seven thirty is the traffic in the morning. Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. I said, get a second?
We have a second, okay. Hold on, favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there is. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna start the, we're gonna start the National Planning Board meeting, and I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for the Pudge of the Agents. Once again, welcome everybody to the Planning Board meeting, and for October twenty eighth, the Town of Tustin. Okay, so we got the line here, all right, so, uh, Amy, do we have any correspondence?
Yeah.
No, not at this time, okay?
Last in the town.
All right, I understand, which we'll get to that, yeah, okay, all right, so, we'll straight into old business, which is, uh, we.
Brendan?
Yeah, oh, sorry, we gotta, right, you're absolutely right, we have to put in the minutes, I apologize, all right, so, uh, we, everybody did receive the minutes from the last meeting, was there any revisions and changes that anybody has to those minutes?
Just a little confusion, anywhere, I was there. Barry was not.
Okay.
So all the eyes are mine.
Okay.
Not Barry's.
Okay. Can you get that? Okay, right. All right, so, uh, I guess I'll accept the motion, are we accepting minutes with the correction?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll submit that.
Okay, uh, all in favor of accepting the minutes with the correction, John pointed out?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that counts. Okay, so, uh, we've covered correspondence already, I kinda went out of order there, and we're gonna move into old business, which is the subdivision that we just held a public hearing on, which is the section block and lot of three dash one dash twelve for Ken Bain on ninety Gables Road. And, uh, I think we did hear back from the county as far as correspondence is concerned. And briefly, um, there was no comments from the, and, and for New York State DOT or the Farmland Protection Board, as that is in that district. Are there any anticipated inter municipal or countywide impacts or none? And the recommendation from, uh, from the county is local determination. And so I think that will lead us into, uh, making a determination on the on the application, you know, so I'll take a motion on that.
I.
Excuse me, yeah, you wanna see the plans?
You got the maps, yes.
Oh, you do have the maps, okay. Well, that was.
That's what we're gonna. Looking public. Let's get, we can share.
Yeah. Rose. Just the way the line is. Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any more comments?
No.
No.
Okay.
My, my only question is, it's more so you don't wind up in having some difficulty when you go to file. We're processing this in the subdivision, but the, the map doesn't say it's a subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision. Are you gonna set this up as a page one or page two, because you, I mean, they're like two standing maps.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be.
It's, it's a single page.
It's a single page.
Yeah, but, but you're creating two lots out of one, and there's a single page as one lot and a separate page as the other lot.
No, this, we surveyed fifty-two point five seven on the north side of Gables Road. The remaining lands of fifty-four acres on the south side of Kenneth Bain Living Trust.
Okay.
Is for number twenty-eight.
So you're not, so you're not showing the, the entire?
Not showing the entire person.
Okay, all right, there I go.
Good? Yep. Okay, so we, uh, don't have any further board comments?
No.
So, uh, you did the secret last month, right?
We did everything.
You got the two thirty-nine review, so you're, you've completed your public hearing, so you can decide if you're gonna proceed. All right, well.
All right.
Mike, you wanna make one?
How was my motion?
I'm sorry, I'll stop.
I will make a motion that we now accept the application from the Kenneth Bain Living Trust.
Okay.
I'll second.
Most of these were approved.
I'll second.
You already accepted the application.
Yeah, no.
All right, you are, which are our counselor, right, you are.
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we need a roll call on that, or?
Um, we can, if we want. That's, that's fine, yeah. Maybe, aye, aye, okay, John? Aye, okay, Peter? I'm an aye.
Aye.
And a.
Okay.
Ayes all aye.
All right, so it's unanimous.
All right.
That's going, okay.
I know. I know.
Which we, I need to understand, but we're gonna have it. Oh. Will you, no, okay.
No, not for this.
No, because you can just.
He does file, got you. He's gonna, he's gonna need the Milar and paper copies signed, so we can file them, and we have at least one or two.
They're over there.
Because I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, and also, we did get the receipt, or something like that, a little here.
I need to sign this. Okay. And another, although, the provision would be this one, I, I write here.
You got that?
So one's on one side and one's behind me. Everything behind me. As long as he doesn't use his order.
I looked at all of it.
He got, okay, there we go.
No, we're still signing.
Still signing.
Different chance. He's up very late last night.
All right. So.
I'll give it to Amy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Signing part.
We don't have to stand out.
But no, I, no, I mean, as long as they bear the chairman or the acting chair and signature.
So that's collection.
Yeah, that's.
That was.
Well, I, we will add it. So, you know, I hear you.
Yeah, I'm not, yep. Let him, let him correct.
Exactly. I'm not charging for always spending.
He's not folding, he's rolling.
Folding, spinning, or mutilating anything.
It's hard to folding, too, but. But you don't fold a Milar, otherwise it really could be the whole.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, let's move on to new business. And, uh, here we have an application for a special use permit from Kathleen Johnson and Narrowsburg Motor Sales. And, uh, this is a special use application. There's, we have to do them both, there's two applications, can't do them together? Yeah, okay, so we have two applications, um, and let's review those applications real quick. Okay, so the first one is, uh, an app, special use application to, and this is for, um, a property located at five Grassy Swamp Road in Narrowsburg. Is to allow an automotive, the automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair facility. And the second one is to permit automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair for the purpose of relocating. I'm sorry, that's the same one.
That's the continuation.
That's the continuation, I thought, is that, so that would be to permit automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair for the purpose of relocating the New York State DMV licenses under facility number two, five, three, zero, 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 nine. Okay, and then that's the one, and then the second one. One, dash, one. One, one, dash, one. And the second one is also a special use application to allow automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair. And that's to permit automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair for the purpose of relocating New York State DMV licenses under facility number two, five, three, zero, 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 nine. Okay, yeah, I'll get the, the applicant, just give us an idea what you're proposing.
I would do a number.
Kathleen's looking for a special use permit in order to move her facility to either five Grassy Swamp Road and or uh, State Route ninety-seven, which used to be the old Cortez Body Shop. One of the reasons she's looking for five Grassy Swamp Road is this has, if we get the approval from the town that will permit this, we then have to get the, uh, permission from the Department of Motor Vehicles. First permission that they need is the zoning, the second, uh, we would not we would need from them is to move it to the house at five Grassy Swamp Road for the purposes of at least doing the sales in the, uh, three licenses that we have. We can do the sales from the residents, we would need to get other permissions from DMV. In order to do that, um, it would allow us to either sit back, decide what we wanna do come the spring, do we want to, uh, put a full facility at, uh, Route ninety-seven, or put, um, just the sales and maybe a one-car, two-car garage up at five Grassy Swamp Road for the purpose of, uh, downsizing further. That's kind of it, nutshell, as you've got a question on clarity of that.
So effectively, it becomes potentially a home-based business.
Yes.
Yeah. Would be for purposes of the definitions and the.
I, I can say that at the five Grassy Swamp Road, we would not be operating the same as we would at the Route ninety-seven lot. We would, we would not be looking to have display of vehicles. We would not be looking to do public repairs of vehicles. It would be strictly her being more of a, uh, a broker. People calling her, telling her what they want, basically what she's been doing for the last couple of months.
So is it fair to say you're just looking for a place to park your licenses while you get the DMV to sort that all out?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you anticipate signings?
The DMV will require us to have, uh, free signs. One would be the repair, one would be the sale, and one would be the inspection. We have a shed at the house right now that I think would satisfy them for those purposes. But other than that, we would not, unless motor vehicles require something from us more than those three.
Got you.
And obviously Route ninety-seven would be so much different.
So obviously, it's, because you've indicated you're not anticipating big retail flow through your house.
No, if, if we're looking to expand, it will be the Route ninety-seven property, that's, that's the reason we bought that property a little over twenty-five, twenty-two years ago.
Okay.
You ultimately want two approvals or just one approval?
We would be looking for two approvals.
Lots of two.
Um, and a reason to be, it would, it would give us an idea, uh, what we could do with either or.
Any further board questions?
No.
Good.
Well, you, you gotta do the secret. And are there site plans?
No. We, um, because we don't have a garage at this point.
Right.
Um, I can get a site plan, as far as it would just be the survey with the house, it would be, uh, an office inside the house.
Is there survey, and is there survey of the other property, too?
Yes, yes, that's a vacant lot.
And there's no building on that either.
There's no building on that, that's the reason we wouldn't move to the ninety-seven because we would need at least a place to keep records, and it would be more expensive to go to ninety-seven.
At one point in time, there was some concept that it would be, is that vision, or?
I'm sorry, eight tents?
Yeah, that'd be tent sales. Or is that?
We couldn't sell off of Route ninety, we can display on Route ninety-seven.
Right.
We could not sell off of Route ninety-seven, the, the, the contracts have to be signed where the license is housed.
Right. Got you.
The boxers used to do that, they were right around the corner from us.
I was gonna mention that, that there doesn't exist, they were existing.
To you, they've had their licenses, they just did like me, like people telling me what they're looking for, and it's not big.
I was there for years and years and years.
Yeah, yeah, that big volume, you know, just custom.
Still waiting for mine.
All right, so.
Which one do you want you first, the five, there's one.
Yeah, we might as well do them. Yeah, the, the first one.
Um, that's the one on, um, Route ninety-seven first, we'll do that one first.
Uh, yeah, is that the five-one-one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's the one, yeah, let's do that one first.
All right. All ready? Okay. Okay, yes, we're good? Okay, the name of the action or project, uh, we're reading the, uh, secret, fourth one, okay, you ready? Crystal, okay. Um, the name of the action, Narrowsburg Motor Sales in Route ninety-seven, the project location is Stell State Route ninety-seven, dash, SBL, five point, dash, one, dash, eleven, the brief description of proposed action obtain special use permit to allow automotive vehicle and equipment sales and repair in order to move New York State DMV facility license number two, five, three, zero, zero, nine, to the above location. The name of the applicant response is Kathleen Johnson, address is five Grassy Swamp Road, Narrowsburg, New York, one, two, seven, six, four. Number one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law audience, ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? Check no. Number two, does the proposed action require permit, approval, or funding from any other agency? If yes, list agency, name and permit or approval. They put the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, they check yes. Number three, total acreage of the site of the proposed action, less than one acre. B, total acreage to be physically disturbed, they put zero. C, total acreage, project site, and contiguous properties owned or controlled by the applicant or project sponsor, less than one acre. Number four, check all the land uses that occur or adjoining or near the proposed action. They check rural. They checked residential. Number five, is the proposed action, A, of permitted use under the zoning regulation? They check no. They, number five, B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, they check yes. Number six, is the proposed action consistent with predominant character of the existing build or natural landscape, they check yes. Number seven, is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? They check no. Number eight, A, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present level, they check no. A, B, are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? They check no. C, H, C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? They check no. Number nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state agency code requirements? They check yes. Number ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply? They check no. Number eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? They check no. Number twelve, A, does the project site contain or substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National State Register of historical places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of New York State Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? They check no. B, is the project site or any portion of it located or an adjacent to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological site on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? They check no. Number thirteen, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? They check no. B, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? They check no. Number fourteen, identify the typical habitat, uh, habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site, check all that apply. They check suburban. Number fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal-associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? They check yes, and it's a timber rattlesnake. Number sixteen, is the proposed site located in a hundred-year flood plain? They said no. Number seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Number seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Uh they check no. Will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties? They check no. Will the stormwater discharges be directly to established conveyance system runoff or storm drains? They check no. Number eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities? That will result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Example, retention pond, waste, lagoon, dam? They check no. Number nineteen, has a site of the proposed action or adjoining property been location of active or closed solid waste management facility? They check no. Number twenty, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? They check no. And then it says I certify that the information provided above is true and accurate to the best. My knowledge, the applicant is Kathleen Johnson, dated October fourteen, two thousand twenty five, she signed a title with sponsor. Hold on one second. That's it. Okay.
We have to park, do we have a part two?
We have a part three?
Okay, they park three. Who's picking this off the pitch, are they doing this?
She'll do it.
On the screen, alright, excellent. Part two to be completed by the lead agency, which is us.
We have to be glad.
We have to be the player, yeah, not yet. No, why don't you, you should do that before you act on part two.
We should declare ourselves, I'll make a motion and declare ourselves the planning board, the lead agency.
Okay, all in favor? Hi. A second.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, are you opposed?
Okay. Alright. So done.
That that carries.
Alright, this is part two, the impact assessment. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? It's either no or small impact or moderate to large.
No or small.
No or small?
Mm hmm.
Good with that, okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or moderate?
No, it's more.
No, it's.
Yes.
Okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics? That caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small?
No.
No or small?
Mm hmm.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No or small. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available? Energy conservation or renewable energy opportunity? No or small? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No or small?
That's correct.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No or small? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small? That concludes page one. The short assessment form then wants a determination of significance. Uh for every question on part two that was answered moderate to large, we need to explain it, otherwise. Uh there's sufficient detail. We need to just basically say.
Yeah, Mike, what I would suggest is it where Crystal's got the cursor now, that's that was that shaded area, I think before she put the cursor there. I think you should just mention the fact that the responses to the, to the questions in part two. Were all or minables, well, no to small.
Right.
It's the yes.
No, what?
Sorry, I didn't.
The answers from part one?
Part two.
Part two. Part two.
Uh. All. No, it's R instead of. Small, no to small, it'll pass.
Small impact.
Period.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you could all hollow it up anymore? You could, well, you could just say that that therefore no significant adverse impacts are likely.
Okay, therefore no.
Small or significant impacts are likely. No, therefore no significant.
We're not sorry, I'm here again.
Are likely.
All likely.
I'm gonna give you the key word. Okay.
And then you can scroll down and now Mike, you you. Brendan, you need a a a motion to to prove which one of those. Okay, so uh. I'll accept the motion. That. Which which one were you?
Yes.
Part two and three.
It says here, if determination is based on the information analysis and above supporting document that the proposal will not result. That that would be the second.
The second box is. Based on what the answers were to part two.
Alright. Okay. Yes. So there's a motion on the table giving to the second.
I will second it.
Alright, so uh. We have a motion, and what was that motion again? The three that. Okay. Part two and part three?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so I'm watching parents. One more motion.
Then you have to.
That 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 the playboard issues a negative declaration. In respect to this state environmental quality review. Okay. Everybody want to make that motion? I'm the negative, negative.
So we want to say we motion to do a negative declaration.
Negative declaration.
What's the rest of the verbiage?
Pursuant to the state environmental.
So the state environmental. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that counts. Alright, Kathleen Paul.
Okay.
Based on the location, we need to do a referral to the county for two thirty nine. Five hundred feet, ninety seven, yeah. This this one is, but that's the next one, that's the next one, no, no, this is this part, that's this one, that is this one, so this one, this one definitely needs a referral to. Okay, to the county for for two thirty nine review.
The second one to prepare. Brendan goes and then I. And then I, he signs this. Brendan, you have to sign and then I sign the other.
That's one.
That you, yeah. Yeah, that's it. I'm kidding, of course. Did we do that? Okay.
Alright.
And then we.
Let's let's finish.
Yeah.
The process for the first one.
Yes, definitely.
So you you've issued a negative declaration, let Amy have the minutes reflect that this will be referred to the county for two thirty nine review. And are you ready to schedule a public hearing for it?
The date would be November twenty fifth?
Number twenty fifth?
At seven twenty five?
Why do we make this one seven twenty and the next one will be seven twenty five?
That's good thinking, right?
Yeah.
So we'll set it up.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty, yeah.
You want to tell about the cards and everything or something?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, I think, um. Yeah, no, but, yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. Okay, so uh. Going to have to. Notify all your neighbors of the public hearing by certified mail, return receipt requested. And we're going to need the receipts as well as the cards that get returned to you from the post office. And uh. Within five hundred feet, yes, of course. Thank you for that. We can move on.
So Mike, move on to the other application.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on to the other application. Just to save Mary and and Mike a little bit of. Time.
Okay.
We're all for that.
Ben, Ben, Kathleen, are are the responses on part one of the seeker form for the for the uh. For the five grassy swamp road location the same as the responses were on part one to the other than the, other than the location? Are all the, all the responses otherwise the same? They're essentially the same use?
Yes.
Yes.
They are intended.
So the part ones, other other than, other than the distinction between the specific site, all all the, all the data regarding.
That is correct.
The use and the activities on part, on part one of this one, so that, then I, unless the board feels the need to, I don't think, I think you can acknowledge that. And save Mary the trouble of having to read that.
Oh, it saves Mary lots of trouble. Okay. Need a motion to uh. How to.
Okay, yeah, cool.
They did not. A motion to uh. What do we say?
To accept, to 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 accept part one as presented.
As presented, yeah.
And 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 without a verbatim reading of it, given that it's it's identical to the part one on the, on the. System, okay.
I make that motion.
And I will second it.
Okay, so uh we will have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
And uh all opposed? Any opposed? Okay, that was.
Two and three or did we get?
No, I think we're not going to ask you guys the same question.
Okay.
Recognizing.
Yes.
The nature of the instance is the same. What?
Uh.
Oh, they, there's a, there's a difference in that one?
That's just looking for.
Number six, is the proposed action consistent with predominant character of the existing build or natural landscape? Oh, no, I like maybe, you know. Yeah, it's the same.
Yes, it's no pay answer on that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, so I guess we have to do it easily. Grab a motion.
If I make a motion, we we declare ourselves the lead agency for this.
Okay, we have a motion to declare ourselves the lead agency on this matter, all in favor? I second, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, none. That carries. You guys having just reviewed part two for the other one.
Yes.
You're familiar with what the questions all are.
Yes.
And knowing the nature of what the application is for this, for this parcel, do you think there's any reason that the answers to any of those would be different?
No.
No.
Wait, no, alright, what? There wasn't one that was different, I knew there was. Number thirteen. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Okay, so alright, so let's just.
Okay.
Record, let's recognize that the only difference between the two part ones is question thirteen A. And that's with regard to the property at uh. By Gracie Swamp Road, Gracie, Gracie Swamp Road, there is a wetland nearby.
Yes, that came off of the uh.
Off the site map or?
The site map.
The map or okay.
But it's not within the, it's not.
It is not.
It's not on the property itself, right?
It is on the property when it's.
But it's not near where the use is.
No, it's on the the border of the property.
Okay. Okay, so let's just make, Amy, let's just make sure that the minutes reflect that minor distinction between the two. And then I, then I, I still pose the same question, does anybody believe that knowing what you know, that the responses to part two? Would be any different for this? Property as opposed to the other part?
We believe.
We believe.
We are believers.
Yes.
So then why does somebody make a motion that with respect to this part two, all the responses should be indicated to be no or small impact?
I'll make a motion that in fact to part two, that uh all of the responses should be small or no.
No to small.
No to small impact. Second, second on that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have many seconded or. Okay, no, it's.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, so now make a motion, if somebody has ever mind to do so. That uh the board adopts part three in the same, to be this, to be completed in the same fashion as part three was on the, on the accompanying application. Including the negative declaration.
Alright, I will make a motion that we uh accept uh.
Complete part three in the same manner.
In the same fact, yeah.
As as part three was completed for the accompanying application.
And we also leave you with the negative. Amen.
So that's your motion, so.
That's my motion, can I get a second on this?
I'll second that. Any opposition?
Okay.
Okay, carries it all. Now, um. We're not within five hundred feet of a state or county highway. No, we're not further than five hundred feet of a municipal boundary. Are we in an ag district? No, we're not. All those things. So this one does not require two thirty nine review, and it's not, and it's not near within five hundred feet of a park.
No.
State or local park. I think that covers it.
We don't have to worry about those rattlesnakes, right?
Well, no, the rattlesnake, their presence is disclosed, but I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna say no to a, you're gonna, you're not gonna have anything in this quarter if you're gonna get over a rattlesnake.
Yeah, the rattlesnakes are on the ninety seven property too.
They could stay.
They're everywhere.
Yeah, I know.
So I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for seven twenty five on this application.
Okay. And that's also going to be for November twenty fifth.
November twenty fifth.
Seven twenty five. Seven twenty five, okay.
I'll second that.
You'll second that motion.
Okay, and uh alright, so we have a motion to create a second public hearing for seven twenty five on November twenty fifth. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries.
In the cards again.
Oh, yeah. No, no, okay, no, well, they're two different properties. And the notice is gonna go to different sets of people.
Like this, it's only, the only fringe coming about in front.
Done? So. Five. And then.
Okay, so uh. Do we have any board comment on any of this? Anybody have any comments?
No, I think we're moving right along.
Okay.
We've been a good job.
Alright, so we do know about the meeting on November twenty fifth, right? And uh subsequently to that, we're going to have two public hearings back to back prior to that, seven twenty and seven twenty five. Okay, and uh. Alright, there's no any further visits.
That will be advertised right there.
Right, that that's.
Usual drill.
Because if there's no further uh.
My favorite part.
Yeah, I'll accept the motion for another German meeting.
I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor of John?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor? I mean, all, all opposed, none, okay?